Good, all right. Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, March 16, 2020, to order. We strongly recommend that you review tonight's agenda carefully. If you wish to speak on an item, on any item on the agenda, please bring your comment cards to the clerk as soon as possible. While the Milton rules allow a speaker to turn in their comment cards up until the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards will be accepted. Will the city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call a roll for the March 16, 2020, regular meeting. I will waive the reading of the meeting rules since there is no one in attendance in the audience. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Paul Moore is absent. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We appreciate everybody making it here. These are kind of weird times, so we've tried to adjust the meeting so there won't be any concern for our public. So I'm going to ask the clerk to go ahead and call the next item.
Our next item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 20070.
Okay. I'd like to add an executive session to discuss personnel, also an emergency ordinance after our consent agenda, and also add a separate agreement and full and final release of claims after the executive session. Is there anything else that staff or council would want to alter the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and first of all, I want to concur with everything the mayor just said, but I want to provide a little bit of commentary before you actually adopt the agenda. Two things. One is the mayor accurately stated my vision that with respect to the, it's a, basically it's a separation or full and final separation agreement involving a City of Milton employee, Alicia Newberry. That will be actually something we will consider when we come out of executive session. So that's one thing. I also want to put some information in the record with respect to necessity. You know, the Open Meetings Act does anticipate that a council, any board, any entity, has the authority to discuss non-published agenda items that are added on the day of the meeting. A case came down on Friday, which is one of the reasons this is sort of fresh on my mind, is why I want to present this to you. And so what I do want to just talk about, the two issues y'all are going to address. Number one is the Newberry Agreement. That is necessary, A, because finalization of the agreement actually concluded on Friday after the formal agenda had been published, and of course, the actual cessation date for employment is imminent. So we need to go ahead and get this done quickly, and I want the record, to the extent we're creating a record here, to reflect that that's the reason why this wasn't on the published agenda. The other issue that we're going to talk about today is an emergency ordinance. And I don't know that since I've been practicing law about a quarter of a century, I can think of a time that has necessitated an emergency ordinance more than today. This is an extraordinary time, an extraordinary situation. Local governments throughout the state and nation candidly are dealing with the pandemic that we're currently in and trying to deal with it, their processes and otherwise keep the orderly administration of government going, but otherwise taking reasonable measures to safeguard their citizens, which is exactly what we're attempting to do. So the necessity that warranted this to be on the agenda this evening is candidly the fact that this situation is evolving almost on an hourly basis, and local governments are attempting to do the best they can to just keep up with it. And that's what prompted this. And so as you make a motion to approve the agenda, I just wanted to make a record as to why this too, an ordinance for heaven's sakes, was not on the published agenda, but that's because candidly the circumstances dictating we needed to do this have just come up since the published agenda has in fact been published, and we're simply reacting as best we can to protect our citizens and do the people's business. Mr. Mayor, that's my presentation, and I think a motion is in order to approve.
Okay. Thank you, Ken, for adding those words. I'll open up for a motion in a second on the agenda as read.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as read, number 20-070.
Okay. I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Cookerly, a second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. I don't believe we have any public comment tonight.
No, we don't, sir.
We can move to the consent agenda. Suti, if you'd please read the item.
First item is approval of the February 19, 2020, regular city council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 20071, approval of the Birdhouse License and Use Agreement between the City of Milton and the Senior Services North Fulton, Inc., Agenda Item Number 20072, approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and AppZorro for the building of a smartphone app for the city's Smart Communities Challenge Project, Agenda Item Number 20073, our fourth item, approval of a change order, number three, to an agreement between the City of Milton and Triscape, Inc., to change the facility landscaping services and sport field maintenance and to add sport field maintenance of the sports complex at Cox Road. Agenda Item Number 20074, approval of a task order between the City of Milton and Low Engineers LLC to provide short-term plan review support for land development activities. Agenda Item Number 20075, our sixth item, approval of a subscription license between the City of Milton and Earth Networks, Inc., for the installation of lighting detection system. Agenda Item Number 20076, approval of an agreement for outside providers and facility use agreement between the City of Milton and Davis Educational Services, LLC, to provide educational camps. Agenda Item Number 20077, our eighth item is approval of an agreement for outside providers and facility use agreement between the City of Milton and Milton Tennis Center to offer youth and adult tennis programming. Agenda Item Number 20078, approval of an agreement for outside providers and facility use agreement between the City of Milton and North Georgia Recreation, Inc., to provide youth boys lacrosse. Agenda Item Number 20079, our tenth item is approval of an athletic association organizational manual agreement and facility use agreement between the City of Milton and North Atlanta Football League. Agenda Item Number 20080, approval of an agreement for outside providers and facility use agreement between the City of Milton and Rhythm &amp; Shoes to provide youth dance programming. Agenda Item Number 20081, our twelfth item is approval of an agreement for outside providers and facility use agreement between the City of Milton and Halftime Sports, LLC, to provide youth basketball programming. Agenda Item Number 20082, approval of an agreement for outside providers and facility use agreement between the City of Milton and Star Patronella Photography LLC to provide recreation photography classes. Agenda Item Number 20083, our fourteenth item, approval of an agreement for outside providers and facility use agreement between the City of Milton and Wavelength Learning Group, Inc., doing business as Bach to Rock, to provide youth and adult music classes and camps. Agenda Item Number 20084, our fifteenth and final consent agenda item is approval of an agreement for outside providers and facility use agreement between the City of Milton and Milton Mustangs to provide the swim team program at the Milton City Pool. Agenda Item Number 20085.
Okay. I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda as, or approve the consent agenda as read by the city clerk.
Second?
Okay. I have an approval from Councilmember Longoria with a second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, Suti, if you will please read the ordinance item that we added during the approval of the agenda.
This is an emergency ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia, under Section 3.18 of the Charter of the City of Milton, Georgia, to provide for the operation of the City of Milton, Georgia, during the public emergency of the novel coronavirus disease, 2019 global pandemic, to provide for an effective date and for other purposes. Mr. Ken Girard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as I had forecast in my prefatory remarks, the City of Milton Charter does anticipate that we have the ability to enact emergency ordinances. They are good for 30 days. They will immediately discontinue after 30 days unless they are in fact renewed. And this emergency ordinance pertains, of course, to the pandemic we're currently going through. And what this pertains to is candidly the operation, particularly with respect to the operation of the City of Milton as it applies to how we interact with the public who wants to engage their government. Every jurisdiction that I work in is grappling with this issue right now. A lot of governments are doing it differently. I think that what we have put in front of you and what I'm going to go over is a very measured response that sort of balances the need for the City of Milton to continue to operate in a fiscal and responsible manner, but also putting aside maybe some of the long-range, more strategic and policymaking of things that this council does, putting it aside for a period of time thus that citizens don't feel compelled to want to come to the meetings and need to participate and speak live at the meetings because we're not going to make those sorts of decisions for a while. I think that the law gives us the opportunity to sort of do that, and that's what we ought to take advantage of. So what this does, this emergency ordinance, should the council want to approve it, and all of the things I'm going to talk about would extend for 30 days, because that's as long as this emergency ordinance can last, is 30 days, is that public hearings, first of all, let's talk about public hearings, all matters requiring a public hearing, including but not limited to zonings, special use permits, variances, and even regulatory permits, are stayed for a period of 30 days from the date of this ordinance. At the conclusion of the 30 days or earlier termination of this ordinance, the scheduling of hearings will resume in the ordinary course, barring a further extension of this ordinance. Milton staff are directed to work with applicants and those otherwise affected by this stay to ensure that financial impact or business interruptions are kept to a minimum, but all of those public hearings will be stayed. The next section, existing regulatory permits. If there are in effect existing regulatory permits, like an alcohol license, et cetera, that required a public hearing to renew, and they will lapse. If they don't, we are automatically extending those until such time as we can have a public hearing. So again, you can see the emphasis. The emphasis is, is to not force our citizens to have to come and engage us live. 2.3, Milton zoning and administrative agencies. The business of Milton zoning and administrative agencies, such as the Milton Planning Commission, Milton Board of Zoning Appeals, the Milton Design Review Board, and all other what I call inferior agencies, not that they're inferior in purpose, but actually just not you, not the council, are hereby suspended for a period of 30 days from the date of this ordinance. At the conclusion of 30 days or the earlier termination of this ordinance, all those entities shall continue business operations in the ordinary course. Okay. Now to you, the Milton council. The Milton council shall continue to operate and assemble at public meetings subject to the following. Number one, all policymaking functions of the council, like strategic plans, ordinances, land use functions, visioning, development of citywide objectives and goals, and similar sort of long-range planning activities, are suspended for 30 days, except for policymaking and ordinance functions directly related to addressing COVID-19 and related public health and safety issues. So in other words, we're not going to be talking about land use planning for 30 days because that involves, citizens want to get engaged in that. But when it comes to the pandemic, we will continue to engage on this. All zonings, plats, variances, and other land use decision-making will be suspended for 30 days. All nonessential business proclamations, presentations, will be suspended for 30 days. Contracts, budgeting, and the fiscal operations of the city shall continue in the ordinary course. We do need to continue to do the people's business. E, citizens, by way of our staff and our public informational apparatus, will be strongly encouraged to observe city council meetings via online streaming, particularly in light of all the planning and public and ordinance-based functions being suspended. Watch from home, that's where it's safe. F, citizens that choose to attend an open meeting will be allowed to attend, but will be requested to observe sort of social distancing protocols, sit away from each other. And again, you see the gallery this evening, we're optimistic that will continue to be the way it goes. On or before the 30th day after this date, the council will convene, and we will either shut this down or we will continue it for another 30 days. I will tell you, some of the jurisdictions I'm working in that aren't constrained by this 30-day limit are going ahead and putting 60 days in. We'll just have to renew after 30. My sense from everything I'm hearing, and you've got public safety folks that can probably speak to this better than me, but is that 60 days is probably a more reasonable benchmark to go by. Mr. Mayor, that's the presentation. This is an emergency ordinance. I think it's a nice balance of the pragmatic and being reasonable and responsible, but this is what I would recommend, and I've recommended to the city manager.
Okay. And to clarify, I know you said we can extend it another 30 days.
That's right.
That may be unfortunately what folks are predicting, but also to clarify, if something were changed, we could end it earlier too.
Exactly. It was drafted with that expressly intended.
Are there questions or comments on this? Okay. I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the emergency ordinance resolution to continue the operation of the City of Milton under the guidelines as presented in the resolution.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley for approval, with a second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Next item is, I'll open up for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel as added to our agenda. I'm moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria for approval, with a second from Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.[1342.65] That's unanimous.
My, it's a crowd.
Good-looking crowd.
Sure is. All right, do I have a motion to reconvene?
Second.
I have a motion, a second to reconvene. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Sudi, will you please read the final agenda item that was added under the approval of the agenda tonight?
That item is a separation agreement and full and final release of claims between the City of Milton and Alicia Newberry. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you very much. This last item on your agenda is a separation agreement and full and final release of claims under the Open Meetings Act. I have the obligation to come and sort of walk you through the substantive part of this agreement. So the agreement that is in front of you is, again, is a full and final release of claims involving the City of Milton and Alicia Newberry. The material components of the agreement are that there will be a cessation of employment date of March 22 of 2020, and that upon Ms. Newberry's leaving employment with the City of Milton, she will receive compensation in the amount of $11,879.52, representing six weeks of severance and corresponding health insurance costs for three months, with appropriate payroll deductions made at a regular rate. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, those are the substantive terms of the agreement, and it's my recommendation to be ratified by the council.
Okay. Open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the separation agreement between the City of Milton and Ms. Alicia Newberry with the material components as read by Mr. Gerard.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval, Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, and that would conclude our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Or is there anything else anybody wants to add or comments?
Well, that's a good point. I did want to bring up something.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
So we took action tonight to prepare ourselves for things that could go, could cause us challenges for the next 30 days. I was listening to the news today. President Trump basically said that this could extend out as far as August of this year, which I don't know how to react to that. But with the idea that we may need to meet without actually physically meeting, I was wondering, Stephen, if we could start researching some better tools from a teleconference-type point of view. I think that the stuff that we have today works okay if you're just looking at the meeting and not really participating, but I'm a little bit worried about what we would have to do if we actually had to meet via some kind of, you know, WebEx or Cisco meeting or something like that.
Right. So the two answers, one's a legal one and then one's not going to be a legal one. The legal answer is, is the Open Meetings Act does contain a provision that allows for a true teleconference meeting, not one or two of you calling in, but the entire council not physically assembling. And of course, that has to be upon a declared emergency, which you all would have to take official action to declare, which you've sort of done tonight, by the way, but it would take a little bit of additional papering. But the only additional requirement is, is that that teleconference meeting has to be simultaneously viewable by the rest of the public. So they would need to literally be able to click a link on your website and be able to also participate. So right now, that's going to take a little bit of technical prowess to pull that off. I know a lot of jurisdictions are not quite there yet and are working toward it. I also do expect that the Attorney General is about to give some enhanced guidance to governments on some other alternatives that they may be able to pull off. I know some governments have been dealing with the notion of truly assembling, like you all have done, with literally the ability to lock the doors with no one else can come in except for live streaming. That has not been signed off on yet. The Open Meetings Act doesn't allow that yet. But the notion was, is that sort of difficult times call for difficult solutions, and maybe the AG would give us some guidance on that. But a true cyber meeting, which is what Councilmember Longoria is talking about, whether it's done by some sort of a Skype or go-to-meeting sort of protocol or some other protocol, the Open Meetings Act doesn't speak to it directly, but I think that that may be in the works, and a lot of governments are looking at doing just that right now.
And as you can tell from Ken's comments, we're looking at the technology.
Yeah, I had a feeling you were, but...
I was originally hoping to pull something like that off tonight, but obviously I can't. We can cast out live, but we lack the ability for common interaction.
Right. I mean, you can see the difficulty with a true cyber meeting. So say every one of you is at home in front of a computer, presumably with either a phone or a monitor and maybe a little video camera. It's just, it gets complicated. And then to simultaneously simulcast that to your public.
I mean, I had a full staff meeting today with people in the building over electronically. It's the introduction of the other part that I have a, we wrestle with, but there's solutions.
Good, thank you.
Okay, and I just might also mention the census coming up. I don't remember the exact date, and I don't know how this will affect actually the whole census process. So, but need to keep that in mind and remind everybody to get counted.
It'd be easier if people be at home and counted.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
One way or the other. So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn. A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.